环节呢而家可以
Members. This is the session on the expansion on communications and creative industries. Apart from Mr. Edward Yao, we have Mr. Clement Leng and their team. I would first invite Mr. Yao to deliver a speech. And after that, the floor will be open for questions. Members who would like to speak, please press a button. Mr. Yao, please. Thank you, Chairman. From this year's budget, I hope we can see that on telecommunications, creative industries and film development, we, these are the areas of focus for this year. In terms of telecommunications, apart from removing legislative barriers, we have prepared for the arrival of 5G technology, and this is reflected in our spectrum assignments. And at the Let's Go panel next month, we will brief members again on the redistribution of our 5G spectrum. And hopefully later this year, we can make available 5G spectrum bands. In the past, when new spectrum was made available, different measures were needed. For example, the construction, or for example, the support from base stations. And 1,000 spots were made available from the government to welcome 5G. And in terms of extending broadband services to villages, tender will begin later this year. And hopefully, from 2021, 235 villages and about 110,000 villages will benefit from this scheme. Earlier, we briefed Let's Go that we will switch off analog TV on the 1st of December 2020. And there's a 21-month preparation period to allow ample time for the exercise and to prepare the relevant households for the vacated spectrum bands. We hope to enhance our telecom or broadcasting coverage. In terms of the creative industries and film development, these are emerging industries of potential in Hong Kong. Last year, under the Create Smart Initiative, we offered a $1 billion subsidy. And this year, we are providing $1 billion for our film industry for development, marketing, training, and audience building. And we hope that this can revive our film industry and create more business opportunities. Chairman, at the last session, Mr. Peter Shu asked about the P2P telemarketing calls. And as we indicated before, a number of Let's Go members and parties requested legislation on P2P calls. And we are going to table our bill very soon at Let's Go. I would not ask Mr. Shu to repeat his question. I would defer to Mr. Edward To, the Deputy Secretary. So perhaps Mr. To can address his question first. Mr. To, thank you very much. And like the secretary said, next Tuesday, we would bring this issue to the panel. And I'd like to outline our thinking. Mr. Shu asked whether there would be any difficulty in overseas enforcement. So if the calls come from overseas, what can, what can we do? I think this is actually not new. There is, this is a current challenge we face. And we would make reference to the ordinance on unsolicited messages. And we understand that there would be, there could be enforcement difficulties due to the cross-boundary or territory nature of the calls. And having learned from our experience for unsolicited messages, we have to work with different jurisdictions. For example, by building referral mechanisms. But this would depend on the actual or specific jurisdictions. For example, whether other jurisdictions have corresponding legislation, their priorities, etc. Mr. Shu also asked whether there would be a compliance burden or cost burden on the trade. And we received different views in our consultation. The public looks forward to legislation, but the trade is concerned about compliance costs. And as you might be aware, we have introduced some facilitation measures for the trade so to help them comply with the trade. We have adopted an opt-out mechanism. That is, they would, the public can opt out from certain calls instead of an opting mechanism. This would facilitate the trade so that only people who opt out would be exempted. So in terms of P2P calls, do we have to provide messages in Chinese and English? This is a requirement for unsolicited messages. But since there are technical difficulties in conveying a lot of information within calls, we would accept disseminating the message in a single language only. So for details, we will outline more in our, in the joint panel meeting next week. Thank you very much. Three questions are waiting to speak, four minutes each. If necessary, we can have second round. First, Mr. Riech, four minutes. Thank you. The secretary said the government is supportive of the creative industries and the film industry. Apart from resources, legislative support is also important. I want to ask about question 003. Basically, I ask this question whenever I have the opportunity. When will the government finally amend the control of seen and indecent articles ordinance or COIAO? Earlier, a novel called Killing Commanditor was classified as Class II indecent material. It became the butt of jokes from the industry. And if the legislation is not clear, there could be a lot of confusion. And in recent years, the government has communicated with the judiciary, and they will report the progress of their work with the relevant Let's Go panels. I'm not happy with the reply. Indeed, the Bureau did carry out work on this front. I, together with friends from the art and culture sector, I met the Bureau. But empty talk means nothing. Or else we will see more art and culture products being targeted by COIAO. Even an exhibition might be subject to the ordinance. So I would not list all the examples. So I hope the government would have concrete plans. There are only about two years to go for the current term government, so what will be done? Secretary?
Thank you very much. First of all, in May, we will discuss the issue in May. So hopefully, more details can be made available. Let me be frank by saying that there are substantial difficulties in the work. Currently, there are three key guidelines under COIAO. First of all, the standard, the criteria for seen and indecent articles. And it would, it depends on the standards of morality, decency, and propriety generally accepted by the community. So it depends on the actual impression given out by a work. For the novel written by Haruki Murakami, it was exhibited in a book fair, and it stirred a lot of discussions. But can amending the ordinance completely avoid the situation? So we would have to look at the standards of morality, decency, and propriety. Our society is ever-changing, so there are always some firsts. So the current approach is to have a 1,500 or 500-person pool represented by different sectors. Hopefully, we can have different views. And there were earlier discussions that certain people should be chosen and as they are closer to, or they are more, they might be more familiar to literature. But the question is whether these people can, can they really better grasp the standards of morality and decency of the community? I think the element of judgment is inevitable. So we currently have a tribunal, and two persons would carry out the judgment. And if there is disagreement, it can also be, there is also a mechanism to deal with it. So how can we better reflect the views of different people in this society? That is a consideration. I do not want to cite the Haruki Murakami novel again. But in some cases, if there are borderline decisions to be made, we would have to look at the target audience. If the audience is a more restrictive group, we might have more flexibility. If children can access such works, then we might have different standards. So we have formed preliminary views. But can we totally avoid these scenarios? Like Mr. Chan said, so in our adjudication work, we can never have perfect solutions. So hopefully, we can have a discussion come May. And I also hope that members can consider what is a better approach. Well, I think work must be done, and in the process, we can improve our measure. We cannot just keep having discussions with no end result. Mr. Peter Shu, would you like to address the issue on P2P calls? Mr. To offered a response to my previous question on P2P calls. He said calls from other places would not be governed. I think it depends on the origin jurisdictions. Well, I'm sure, well, I believe most calls are in Cantonese. Well, they would not, we are not going to receive calls in Bengali. So for calls from the mainland, after the legislation is in place, is there any control in the mainland on P2P calls? If we continue to receive calls from the mainland, while many Hong Kong call centers have been relocated to the mainland. So with the legislation in place, can they continue to call us?
Mr. Clement Leng.
Permanent Secretary. As for the scope of control, we have listed the scope in detail in the Let's Go paper. Apart from the origin of the calls, if calls are made to a phone number registered in Hong Kong or issued by the Communications Authority, they, those calls would be governed. Alternatively, if a company instructs or requests for such calls to be made, even if they are made from overseas, these calls would be governed by the ordinance. Mr. To, Chairman. Let's say if someone makes a call from the mainland to Hong Kong in the name of my company, and if I receive a lot of complaints, will I be arrested? Mr. Leng?
Well, if a call is made to a Hong Kong telephone number, it's regulated. Second, we have to look at whether the company has, as a matter of fact, instructed the calling, the call center to make the call. If you have authorized it, of course, your company would be held responsible. But if you haven't, then the caller is still held responsible. How can you prove it? Would, would they be giving you the contract? If the call is made from the main, in the mainland, the centers are in the mainland, they can keep calling you. And then can you, can you suddenly arrest me saying that I'm involved? How can I prove my innocence? Or if I am actually involved, how can you prove it? Well, it seems that like the cooling-off period is, well, you are, you end up, you end up not being able to arrest anyone. Well, let's not make this personal. I've stated my position already. I understand Mr. Shu's point. I think the first time we took this up in a panel meeting, that since we don't have any extraterrestrial jurisdiction. But does it mean that we have to give up everything? So the Permanent Secretary has said this. We want to make sure that the cases, the complaints can be pursued under reasonable situation. But we also, we want to prevent innocent people from being in court. That's why we want to seek your comments with regard to the broad legislative framework. And you will say the framework, although not perfect, might be able to address some of the problems, then we can move forward. But if there are actual problems that we cannot address, perhaps we can take the post back and reconsider it. But I think there is some difference between the, the way the laws will be regulated. If you compare P2P telemarketing calls vis a vis cooling-off period requirements. I hope when we present the proposals to the panel, we would have a more follow-up discussion there. Next, Mr. Charles Mok, four minutes. Many members, many people have raised questions about 5G. So just to use one of the questions, CDBCCI 2026, a question about the spectrum allocation for 5G service. We have asked the secretary when the proposals can be presented to our panel. I've heard, or have you told us that it would be in May? That's, that's correct. I, I'm still concerned about another thing, and that is before we adjourn in July. Do you have the confidence that before July, given the business that we have on our plate, are you confident that the law can be enacted by July? Because you only make the preparation after the law has been enacted, and then you have to auction the spectrum. The industry is saying that this will be in the latter half of this year or even in the fourth quarter. You know that Korea launched 5G in April or this month. And they, they offer subscribers drumsticks if they subscribe to 5G service now. And we are concerned about the increasing cost. If the later we do this, the higher the cost. So we, how can we control the cost? And you need to build the 5G stations, the base stations for 5G. Apart from the measures that the government would do, what else would the government do to help the industry achieve the goals? I don't think my thinking is in any way different from Mr. Charles Mok. We are seizing the moments, we are proceeding with full speed. We're going to present the proposals to the panel in May. And then subsequently, the amendments to the subsidiary legislation will be in the hands of, not me, in the hands of Let's Go members. It's going to be subject to the negative process approach. It could have, it could be done within a month. So it's a matter of whether Let's Go members would allow the proposals to be, to go forward. So I count on you, Chairman of the panel, the previous channel, as well as the present chairman of the panel, to help us to get this done. Let's promote 5G together. Of course, that's good. We waste, we have wasted four months. It, it was said that it would be discussed in January. Well, I don't think it's controversial. But don't, but please don't suggest that I am trying to be difficult. You have delayed the process. What about base stations? Well, we understand that in the next step, we need to build new base stations. For example, for the higher frequency of the spectrum. And we are not going to leave this to operators to locate the sites. Through interdepartmental efforts, we have already located, identified 1,000 government premises. Have you informed them? According to the Permanent Secretary, yes. So the industry would not need to approach different landlords to get the premises. They would just be dealing with one landlord, the government. To further expedite the development of 5G, we are willing to do this. The first step is the spectrum allocation. What about the the cost of the spectrum in the auction? You have to consider that costs are increasing because of the compressed timetable. Of course, Mr. Mok represents the industry. He would like to have as low a spectrum fee as possible. But the public will also stand to benefit if the fees are low. But we have to be fair. We have been auctioning spectrum. We have talked to the industry to assure them. But for example, for spec, specific spectrum bands, 26, 28, will do this through assignment. And they will not be auctioned off. The Dr. Elizabeth Quaid, four minutes. I want to follow up on the 5G issues. We have been asking the government when 5G will be available. The first 5G service has just been launched recently. The public would like to get a clearer timetable. What, when do you expect that the public in Hong Kong can have access to 5G service in Hong Kong? And last time at the panel, the government didn't make it clear. And when 5G becomes available, would there still be bright spots in Hong Kong? How are you going to address this, this problem? Last time, it said that the service providers would decide whether to relocate their base stations. If they don't, then the current bright spot will remain bright spots. Well, but the people in Hong Kong would like to get 5G service quickly. So how are we going to do with, deal with the problems of black spots? First of all, the timetable. After the spectrum auctioning, the operator will have to make headsets available. And then they will have to make available the base stations. We hope that soonest we could have 5G service in 2020. Many countries are saying that they will launch this. But usually, this is for limited coverage or it's just a pilot scheme. And certainly, there will be areas which will not be covered for some reasons. For example, where there's a traffic congestion. When we want to switch off analog TV, we would assign some of the vacated spectrum to say the indoor coverage, such as MTR premises. And in the case of, say, Taipu, we'll try to do something to improve gradually the coverage. We understand there are problems. And I've heard members that we would like to get 5G as soon as possible and to improve the coverage as soon as possible. Well, this answer is similar to the last answer you gave. You are leaving a lot to the industry. So would the government ask the operator to do more to deal with problems faced by Taipu, such as faced by places such as Taipu and Stanley, so that they would no longer be bright spots? Well, in answering the oral question, you already said that we had to respect the rights of the service providers. But it doesn't mean that we are doing nothing in our communications authority. We, we have been in, in discussion with service providers on how to make 5G available. But there are limitations. There are spectrums that we are going to allocate, and the service providers can use other spectrums to provide 5G service. Apart from newly available spectrum, the operator can also use their existing spectrum through some reorganization so that these districts will, will also be, will also be given 5G. Well, you know that telecommunications is now a necessity. So please make sure that in, when 5G is available, then populated areas, and I'm not talking about remote and unpopulated areas. Perhaps you should make sure that populated areas will not become bright spots. For different generation of telecommunications service, the service provider would establish the network of stations in a gradual manner. So it would not happen overnight. And so given Hong Kong's conditions, even 4G is not available in certain areas, and it would be downgraded to 3G if 4G is not available. So when they lay their network, the operator, the service provider would adopt a gradual approach in covering different districts and areas. But during the initial stage, we may not be able to achieve 100% reception all over Hong Kong. That's clear? Mr. Elvin Young, four minutes. Let's respond to the, let's talk about the reply from the Permanent Secretary. Bright spot is one thing, and no reception for entire district is another thing. We should not equate the two. I don't think that would be acceptable, therefore, entire district, for example, Taipu, which is my constituency, is not going to get, say, 5G. And also, you want to increase the number of broadcast hours, broadcasting from 19 to 24 for LTHK 31. Is the equipment in, of LTHK able to cope? You don't have a new studio to build for LTHK. So what are you going to do? What preparation are you going to take up to allow LTHK to do more? Can you Can you, can you provide any positive response on the Broadcasting House project? Director of Broadcasting, starting from the first of April, the TV channel, Channel Thirty One is now broadcast around the clock. When we made the decision to do this, we considered our resources and our coverage. And we thought we could handle that. There are many different approaches that we can adopt to allow, to do that. We have been able, we have been doing our best to put the resources available to us to the best use.
As for the number of recording studios, for some time, the utilization of the recording studios have been much higher because we are now utilizing virtual sets. And we can change the virtual sets at least once a day. If the studios are to be deployed for television production, even with more TV programs, we do, we might not necessarily need more recording studios. Apart from our studios, a lot of the recording takes place outside. We have a number of talk shows on on history, philosophy, etc. These programs are becoming more and more popular. And for these programs, we use the same set every night. So currently, we, this has not placed any stress on us. We understand that L T H D, L T H K staff are working very hard. But you cannot utilize them fully at all times. This is unreasonable. What should I, what should I say? I think we should allow the secretary to talk about the new Broadcasting House. Secretary for the new B H. When we made an application last time, Lesko imposed a condition. And we had to slash the budget. And that's why we considered alternative approaches, including identifying buildings that are not purpose-built. The assistant director is responsible for the job and the post would expire by May. So hopefully, we can receive support from members. While the secretary seems to be canvassing. So perhaps the secretary should tell us about their difficulties or which departments are not cooperative and we can lend a hand in lobbying. I think the first lobby would take place at Lesko. If Lesko approved the funding last time, then we would have a new Broadcasting House. Mister Ma Feng Quat, four minutes. Thank you. I want to follow up on questions thirty and thirty, and sixty six. Zero three zero is about the creative industries. In the reply, the government said that Create Hong Kong organized events in the past and they took delegations overseas. Did the government gauge the response from the trades after they took part in these visits? And whether they, the government helped them enter or create markets? The government and industries have been proactive in making such visits, especially to the Bay Area. Has the government considered whether they would organize visits in the Bay, in the Belt and Road areas? As for the issue with L T H K, I'm very happy that there will be more sports programs in the coming year. So for sports matches, do we have to pay for broadcasting of local matches? For the seventh Hong Kong Games, has the L T H K considered how they can work with the Home Affairs Bureau? So that more programs can be broadcast? For the visits to Belt and Road countries, we will, we will certainly consider the idea. For the second question, I would defer to the head of Create Hong Kong, Mister Chan. Mister Victor Chan, head of Create Hong Kong. In recent years, we have arranged a number of visits and deputations for the film industry. In the last two years, we made three visits to Belt and Road countries. We visited Iran and Malaysia as well as Hungary. We promoted our technologies and special effects in action movies. And we wanted to identify business opportunities in these areas. After those visits, we received some inquiries as well as some actual contracts. And we successfully opened up new markets in Hungary. We are still gauging the results. But we saw that Hungary has very good facilities and there is room for cooperation in film. For the seven non-film areas, we visited Dubai for architecture. We visited Belarus for publishing. As for, and as for animation and comics, we visited Malaysia. In Dubai, there are a number of developments. We took some young architects to the country to introduce their own, to introduce themselves for Belarus, like Mister Ma said. We made a visit with the Belt and Road office. We visited some industrial parks. And hopefully, we can identify opportunities for our publishing sector. For the Malaysian visit, it was well received. The anycom sector participated. And response was very positive. And we also identified business opportunities. Mister Lung, can you talk about, can you address the issue on L T H K? There will be small, there will be more sports programs broadcast by the L T H K. L T H K, I must pay tribute to our colleagues responsible for sport broadcasting. Last year, there were fifty shows, and in the coming year, there will be more than fifty. If we are to broadcast sports programs, we have to do a lot of coordination with the relevant units on issues such as broadcasting right. And then we would have to think about the technical issues and manpower for broadcasting fees in terms of the broadcasting rights. What the, the L T H K broadcasted before were non-commercial in nature. So that this is not our mode of operation. We do not operate on a commercial basis. So we, the rights were courtesy of the relevant bodies. So if we are to broadcast a match, it would, we would have to consider the scale. For, for a football match at Shangqun Old Sports Ground, we might deploy six cameras. But for the Lunar New Year Football Cup, we have to deploy at least eight cameras. It depends on the scale of each match. So in the past, we broadcast some inter-school sports competitions. For example, in the school badminton competitions, the audience was very small, but the atmosphere was still great nonetheless. For the coming Hong Kong Games, we have plans in place already at the Wan Chai Sports Ground. There will be six concurrent matches and they would be broadcast by the L T H K. Since multiple matches would take place at the same time, some would be broadcast live. While others would be, while others will be recorded. So hopefully, this addresses the question. Thank you very much for members waiting to speak for the second round, three minutes each. First, Mister Hsien. I have two questions, zero five one, also about L T H K and zero zero four on cinemas. For L T H K, I wanted to ask about the new Broadcasting House, but I believe the secretary would not be able to share any new updates. The L T H K is getting busier, like Mister, like the director said. They would need a lot of cameras to broadcast some sports matches. So for the twenty nineteen to twenty budget, well, the budget is smaller than twenty eighteen to nineteen. They, the allocation is about eight, about nineteen million dollars less. The L T H K is getting busier. They have to produce radio and TV programs, and now they have to take out multimedia productions as well. And they have a very heavy workload. Is it that the director is too shy to ask for a bigger allocation? I think their budget should be increased by at least a few percent. Zero zero four is about cinemas. I read about the number of cinemas in Hong Kong or the number of seats. Does the government feel that the number of cinemas and numbers of seats are acceptable? In the John Chang era, he once said that for some commercial sites, cinemas would be inserted in the land, in the provisions. So is this still the policy? We might not need an even distribution of cinemas in different districts. Because people would usually visit the busier areas for cinemas. At Taipu, there would be a cinema. So how many screens and seats will there be? In the North District, there are only about five hundred seats, and this is a bit too little. Who would answer the question? Mister Leung Cowing, director of broadcasting. And then I would defer to the permanent secretary. As for the slashing budget, we came up with the original estimates and subsequently they were revised. So we compared the twenty nineteen twenty estimates with that of the previous year. And there was an amendment as well, like we explained in the reply. Well, I think the crux of the question is whether the L T H K, L T H K has asked for more resources from the bureau. And the answer is yes, and the bureau has been supportive. And they have provided all the support they could. Well, apparently, this is not reflected by the figures. Permanent secretary, how about the cinemas? I would defer to the permanent secretary to supplement on the first question. At a previous panel meeting, we explained that for the last nine years, we, our allocation to the L T H K has increased by about hundred and twenty percent, which is higher than the average increase in the allocation of the government. We created two hundred and thirty-two extra posts. The increase was forty-five percent, while the average civil service establishment increase was only fourteen percent. So no less, no less resources were offered to the L T H K. What about the cinemas, the permanent secretary?
We have seventy-seven cinemas and four hundred and forty-one thousand seats. Some years ago, a few years ago, it was just thirty-six thousand. So we know there will be a cinema in Taipu. So basically, we have cinemas in all the eighteen districts. So the market has responded to this very positively. A simple response will suffice. This is under review. A few years ago, we were concerned about the dropping number. But now, basically, we have cinemas in all eighteen districts. Mister Abraham Shaq. I want to follow up a question about P A C report number seventy-one. The Audit Commission found some, a number of problems with L T H K. We are, we are now considering whether we should have a public hearings on the report. We have raised some questions. You have provided some answers. You talked about some reviews. And I don't want to explain what problems there will be. Well, we need to make a decision. If you don't want us to hold public hearing and give an account to the public, you should answer our questions at, to the best of ability and as soon as possible. And also, when you do your tendering, especially when you hire or employ artists, if you have special problems, you have to explain why you need to handle your cases as special cases. Not that we don't want you to do this. You have to give your grounds. For example, the police have responded to our questions, to our satisfaction. And then we can then explain to the public that from a value for money perspective, we can allow it. And since your budget is not small at all, I understand some of your projects are not commercially viable, but you, you do serve different purposes for those functions. But you, you cannot provide very detailed and satisfactory answers. We will find it difficult not to hold public hearings on our part. I hope you've got explanations to offer. Please let us have them as soon as possible. Well, this is not related to the budget under consideration. But I'm asking you to provide the answers to our questions expeditiously. And also tell us when your reviews will be completed. Because our report on Audit Commission Report Number Seventy-One is almost complete at this stage. Thank you for your question, Mister Shaq. The government accepts that particular report. We respect the recommendations. We'll deal with the problems with L T H K. L T H K would deal with the problem as the government department. I believe that there are always reasons for doing certain things. Some members are concerned whether L T H K is given sufficient resources. But as the audit report has pointed out, we have to look at whether it's good value for money for all the projects. We are giving almost a billion dollars to L T H K annually. And then, as therefore, L T H K would be held responsible for the spending as a government department. But it's a matter of opinion whether certain things should, should be done and whether the certain projects will be, programs will be commercially viable. You may have to give grounds for taking a particular course. Three more members are Uh, three more members are uh in the queue. I draw a line here. We'll conclude this meeting after they have spoken. Mister Su Ka-Fei, I want to follow up my previous question, and that is after the enactment of the new law. And the mainland call centers keep calling Hong Kong telephone numbers. What can we do? Mister Everto, Deputy Secretary, maybe I can give you some information for reference. Calls from the mainland or from overseas countries. Are concepts covered by the current uh uh. Regulation of unsolicited. Electronic messages. Please don't repeat the previous answer. My question is very simple. If after the new law is enacted and the people move their call centers to the mainland and they keep calling us. In Hong Kong, what can you do? First of all, it depends on how the law is worded. The framework proposal. It uh will be such that the situations described by Mister Su will not be, would be unregulated. Will not, would be unfully unregulated. But I cannot say that there would be full regulation of such cause. So a lot would turn on the details in the bill. We can discuss the relevant matters when the bill is tabled. But a quite principle is that we should deal with whatever we can within our jurisdiction. As the deputy secretary said, if the cause can be related to a local company, then we can do this. But of course, it's it has to do with uh evidence gathering. So I think the best approach is to discuss a framework at a panel. Well, you have, you you have covered uh elect uh emails in the in the pre, in the existing regulation system. Have you pursued any successful prosecution? You can do this with the traditional email system. Because uh people used to send emails. To different recipients indiscriminately. So that they they should try to uh send the email to market their products to their target audience. But these people making the calls, they are not employed by the banks, they're intermediaries, they're, they're not businessmen, they are, they are, they are thieves. The new law cannot prevent them from calling the people from uh a a place outside Hong Kong. I think you have heard, Mister Su, please consider all these views when you'd um table the proposal. Uh, in uh May, was the first question is whether E M O. U E M O covers email or not? And uh you have explained why the budget has decreased uh under all nine six nine. So some of the uh. Projects and uh capital works have been completed. You have increased the establishment by seventeen posts. So uh do you think that in certain areas, you should incre- in in increase uh resource, resources? For example, there's been suggestion that you to cover more sports event and do less in the news. But I was, I think news is important and we're going to have elections, etc. in the coming years. Should you also increase the resources to to handle such programs? Director. I have been in the media industry for many years. I've never told people that I've got enough resources. But everyone in the industry should live within the means. We should make the best use of the resources we can secure. And we will plan our work in accordance with the resources that are allocated. R T H A people are very hardworking. Well, have you considered or have you been told by your colleagues that in certain areas of broadcasting engineering, you need to do more? We're going to see convergence of media. We need to work extensively on media convergence. We have the radio, television and multimedia. We need to integrate these uh and efficiently. I cannot remember the number, but there are only a few, a few people working on new media. Do you need to get more resources for that? We should invest more. I'm talking about investment more, eh more investment. As a media organization, we need to redeploy manpower according to priority areas. So we can redeploy the people from less needed areas to areas which we should invest. So you are going to give more people to new media? I think that's clear. And the last one, last member, three minutes, Mister Doctor Elizabeth Quo. When you promote telecommunications creative industries. Don't forget that smart cities is an important industry. Many research reports have said that by twenty twenty, we are talking about a market of one point five trillion in twenty twenty-five, two point five trillion. Other cities such as Singapore, South Korea, Barcelona of Spain. Have worked very hard to export their smart city services and products. Uh, they have been marketing their strategies and services. They will package their services and products. And promote them in other countries. For example, South Korea has exported. Uh blueprint services to India, one hundred ci- one hundred cities and also to Bolivia. And uh the these are done under the G two G, government to government platform. And they do, they do not ask their corporations to sell such products and services to uh overseas governments. And their E T Os will follow up and facilitate and promote and build connections. And then they will sign government to government M O U and then a a collaboration between enterprises can be established. When Singapore and South Korea are doing this in earnest to Asian cities and Belt and Road uh cities as well as the Bay Area cities now. But we are lacking behind. It it, I just don't see the government uh doing a lot uh in the promotion of G two G. Uh co- collaboration and also help us packaging our services and products. It seems to be, seems to me to be a neglected area. Are you going to do more in this regard? Well, I agree with Doctor Quo's views. When we want to uh promote innovation and when want to promote smart city, government should play a part. But I also want to say something that, well, to be fair to the secretary. Well, we have been doing a lot in the smart city framework. Of course, more can be done and we can certainly improve. If we can learn from uh other. Economies, we certainly do though. When we, when I led a delegation to visit Asian countries, uh I've heard from them, I heard from them that there is, was certainly room for collaboration with Hong Kong. Well, when it comes to the promotion of our smart city services and products, uh we are not doing a quite, quite enough. I'm not saying that the Secretary for Technology and you know, for innovation and technology is doing, not doing a good job. But T D C and the Productivity Council under your charge, Mrs. Yao. Smart city, I'm not just thinking about I T. Smart city. Is a service that we are good at and we ran the among the leading, the leaders. Uh, the then many uh parties think that we have something good that we can sell to them.
But currently, there's a lack of coordination from our government. So on behalf of the Smart City Alliance, I hope the government would take the lead in working with the N G O's. Secretary, please take note. Thank you very much for attending this session. The meeting's adjourned. The special meeting tomorrow will begin at nine A M tomorrow.